Or something.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know exactly what she does, but anyways, they've been shut down, you know, so.
Oh.
So I think they've all been pulled up and out together.
Okay, well, that's good for you.
So, but yeah, so that's what I'm saying, so she's not even having to go.
I know that she's in some kind of court, something in law, so.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we are recording live now, ladies and gentlemen, so, uh, welcome to the Bryant City Council Regular Meeting. It's, uh, July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, at the Boswell Municipal Complex, here in the beautiful city of Bryant, Arkansas. It's a little bit cooler today than what I think it has been, uh.
Amen.
So, uh, I think, uh, Butch is going to lead us in the invocation of the pledge, so come stand please.
Bow our heads, please. Gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we're just so thankful to be able to be able to come together in this great country, in this great state, in our great city, to be able to conduct your business. Thankful for the freedoms that we have, to assemble together and to decide those things. Lord, we just ask that you be with us tonight as we conduct this, this business, that it be done for the greatest welfare and benefits of all involved. In Jesus' precious name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
About his absence, do you have a permit or?
Here.
Hawke?
Here.
Lavelle?
President.
Lincoln-Balton?
Here.
Billensley?
President.
Henson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Mayor Scott, we have Coram.
This meeting is called a order, uh, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty regular council meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a motion to second to approve the minutes of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do we have any announcements or presentations that we're not doing our department report? I don't think so, if they have, they haven't told me about it. Uh, I don't believe we have any committee or commissioner reports either, if I'm correct. So that's two items on the agenda down, for everybody who's new to this. Uh, moving on to department reports, uh, Mark Grimmon's going to give us a little update on some stuff. Hopefully, uh, our technology will work well.
So, yeah, I, I think I've only got about two hundred or so slides, so.
Mayor, I'm like.
I'll try to go through them quickly, okay?
Are you serious?
No. Uh, but no, I want to take an opportunity to, to update everyone, I know it's been a while since we've updated you. Uh, I know Ted's been keeping everybody, uh, abreast of all the project situations that we've got going on, so thank you for that. So, starting off for streets, just, uh, a mid-year review for them. We completed the yard waste program, about sixteen hundred work orders year-to-date, this year. That's about eight thousand cubic yards of debris. Um, if you compare that to the twenty-nineteen spring cleanup, we did about five hundred cubic yards. So, we, we've got a, a big increase in the amount of waste that we're collecting, uh, in the people on break, so that's a good thing for a lot of people. Um, so we did increase our service levels from two times per month to four times per month, or not to. Um, culvert and swell rehab, so swells are just another name for digits. Um, we've done two thousand linear feed to culvert replacement, about seventy-five hundred feet of swell rehab. Uh, we've begun our culvert assessment in forty, so what I mean by that is we're going out and making sure we know the locations of every culvert, and what the condition is of those culverts. And that's going to allow us to put that all into our system, and decide when we're going to fix what, okay? So, the other thing, one of the other things we've been working on, Justice Loop Meadow Brook Drainage Project, uh, if you'll recall, the design on that was about a one-point-two million dollar project. Uh, we've done a little over half of that in-house, and, uh, you know, our, our cost is well below one-point-two million, more like ten percent of that, so. That, that's been a good project, we've got a lot of relief from flooding, from our flooding over there in that area from that. Uh, and we're getting ready to start on some projects over in Rain Tree. Um, we had a bunch of engineering work done on that. Ted came to me and said, you take a look at these projects, because we broke up into, I think it's like eight different projects, and, um, see if you guys can do it in-house. So, we're going to take mine, I think it's four of those projects, and we'll be doing that work, we're planning to do it all in August, so hopefully we'll get some good work done before the rainy season gets here again. Um, for asphalt, we've done four hundred tons or so of street cut and hot-hole asphalting. Um, all our roads are in high works as assets now, and repairs are being tracked to each of those assets. So, that, that's a big deal for us, we can keep up with the history of, of that area, what's been done in the past, if something's problematic, we can see it in our system instantly, and when something new comes up, and we can make a prepared one. And we're also looking at the best use for our funds for, for best pavement preservation practices, so if you'll recall, we had a pavement analysis done last year, and so we've gone through, we've got a lot of that stuff loaded into our system. But we're looking at the different techniques, because we're getting a lot of information that's not syncing up with the, the different sources, so we want to make sure that we're taking the best approach to those preservation, uh, methods that we can. You know, one of the things that we know, you know, I think everyone knows, I just wanted to, you know, give you a reminder, we've really pulled back on our spending while we're trying to figure out how to do this partway. And so a lot of that work hasn't been being done. So, when we get ready to start doing this work again, we're not going to concentrate on the very worst stuff first, we're going to look at the stuff kind of middle of the road, so we can save it before it is really bad, because if we don't, we'll never catch up. Because we spend all our money upfront, I think we'll be setting our weight for the punch to go back up, so that's the plan that we're putting. Uh, mowing, you know, we start mowing in March, April, when it's dry enough, first we get the track kicked out of the road. Uh, we've mowed about twenty-five, six thousand acres, uh, finished mowing, and about sixty-six hundred acres, uh, tractor mowing. We've collected a hundred and eighty-nine bags of trash, and we're doing that, so that's, that's a lot of trash, and it's about five thousand pounds, so. Signs and signals, uh, most, most people don't notice this, but we are always replacing signs out there, they get outdated, they're faded, whatever the case may be, or they're just not part of the plan. So, this year we've, uh, replaced or posted some new signs, uh, there's been about four hundred of those jobs. Um, and then we've got the new MMU, uh, signalization for intersection, uh, that's going in, that's going to allow for better monitoring of faults and quicker drainage. So, I'll talk about that more in just a second. Uh, Highway five, Unit Eighty-three, we put a new light in the restroom there, if, if you're familiar with that light, it was going out all the time, and a, a big issue that was happening is doing a light in the rest system, so we've got that taken care of. The, the AI system, it's planned, so this is some equipment that we're talking, installing in all of our signalized intersections, okay? Uh, we did this work in-house, so the, the vendor that we purchased the equipment from came in, showed us how to do it on one cabinet, and we've done the rest of our stuff, so we saved some money there. And all the, the school weekends, estimated time to clean, we'd have to give the office, so we're getting ready to get all that stuff turned up. Um, the AI glance, you know, what, what does that do? It allows us to remotely monitor our signals, so if there's a fault, if there's something goes wrong with our signals, we can log into those from our house, we don't have to get in a truck and drive to the site to see what's going on. We can correct a lot of those issues, um, we can, we can change things, I don't worry with the details on the detection levels. And it allows us to implement our signal timings while we're in a situation, and it says to keep the clock and walking. So, they all have their own, if you don't have a master controller, they all have their own timing sets in there, and, and the timing gets off track, so it's not like they're using sunset timing on it, so it allows us to keep everything synced up. And we can also preempt controls to allow for emergency response vehicles to clear corridors before they get in line to sign it, so that's super important, uh, to all of the project partners. Also, we saw, we installed some door switches in these cabinets, because it, that allows us to know anytime those are open, because we've had situations where people have to get in those cabinets without our knowledge and, and changing things, so, uh, hopefully we'll cut down on that. Oh, this is cool, um, when we get all this installed, it, it, it's, the technology continues, you know, getting updated, there will come a point in time, with this technology that we have, that from your car, we'll be able to get a warning that there's a problem at a signal, okay, a signalized intersection. Or it'll give you a caution that a pedestrian is approaching the intersection, so you need to be careful, watch out. So, it's going to be really neat, it's already software to put in some vehicles, so you'll see more of it, so it's getting us prepared for the future.
Does that link up to Google Maps and stuff too?
It's a good question, though, I'm not sure if that's.
So, I'd say you don't know the answer with this one.
I don't. Uh, I'm sure I'll pick it up. Uh, Stormwater Department, I can just tell you, they've been very, very busy, I'm not going to read all of this to you, uh, they, they made sure that we got very much soil permitting and stuff done for this year, they did a good job, they got a, a pass on that, so we did get a map for here. They've been doing a lot of training with FEMA, uh, did some good ICS training, uh, during the, the whole COVID, uh, pandemic, they've been doing a lot of, out, or through advertisements, things like that. They, you know, they've got the Stormwater manuals in place, uh, all the ordinances around that, and they continue working on the modules and hours, or, or the program system to improve that program and the efficiency there, so. Uh, and they also just recently revamped the adopted street program, so if you're not part of that, then we leave, so let's not, we'd love to have you be part of that. So, these are just other, it's a complete the Drain Smart, uh, program, a lot of people familiar with that, uh, and just a lot more attention on the, uh, uh, you know, the, the existing infrastructure that's out there, and make sure that everybody stays compliant. And working with Ted and Engineering Construction Team, making sure that the developer is doing what they need to do, so they've done a good job with that this year. Um, consent action order work, that CAO work, um, we've done a whole bunch of work quarters around this in the last year, so this, this covers a, a twelve-month period. And so, you know, we've done six hundred and fifty-five, uh, consent action order relating jobs, uh, we've done three hundred and eighty-six line segment cleanings, uh, that's about a hundred and twenty-two thousand feet of sewer main. And then, uh, we televised about forty-three thousand feet of sewer main, uh, we had a hundred and thirty-nine manhole related to, uh, cement or woodwork performance, and we had forty-five manholes that had, had been rinsed and covered. And we had seventy-five manholes that had to be regrouted and rethought or rebuilt back to its status, so we did all this work in-house ourselves, and still trying to get that out, that's why.
Mark, we've had a lot of people say that they love the new Bryant, uh, manhole covers, the one that.
Oh, yeah?
That has a hornet on the, on the top of it, they.
Yeah, we.
It's been, it's been a popular feature.
Yeah, we don't always get those, but people do like to, like, but.
Yeah.
Pretty cool. Well, uh, grease programs on trash, we're getting those done on the, the, uh, third basis. Um, we installed rain catchers where they were needed in the manholes. We had nine manholes that had to have the cones replaced on them, that were bored and drained, we had one that conflicted and rebuilt, um, we had sixteen sewer main repair jobs that we completed, and five line segments that had extension roots on them. So, that's just to clear the roots out of them, so the flow continues unobstructed, and those will wind up having to be replaced at some point. Not included in, in that work is work that was done, other work that's done by the, uh, city in-house. Uh, this is work that was contracted, yeah, we had three sewer main lines that were pipe bursted, uh, to get them back in good working order, four corner barriers contracted, and usually when we contract up the corner barriers out, it's due to some depth, we don't try, we don't really like to do anything, you know, more than ten feet deep. So, anyway, we were able to do this while maintaining all our other data network. So, I mentioned pipe bursting, if you're not familiar with that, I've got a bunch of slides here, but I'm just going to tell you, the nitty-gritty of it, is if you have an existing sewer line that you're selling, you can go in, you can pull a, a pipe head from one manhole to another manhole. You fuse a piece of pipe onto that, and pull it back through the existing pipe, bursting it out of the way, that typically costs us quite a bit of money, so we've done ten jobs, uh, over the last year or so, year and a half, uh, that were contracted out, that cost us good, make sorry, of course, so. Just to give you an idea, this is what the equipment looks like to do the pipe bursting, you take that piece of equipment, you set it down in the hole, you have pipes, you know, that you push up through the existing pipe, you attach it to the new pipe, and pull it back through, okay? Uh, this is just, uh, an example of the contracted cost for pipe bursting. You know, the average contracted price for, uh, a trench or, uh, pipe repair is typically fifteen to ninety thousand dollars for one section, uh, we can do that for a third of the price in-house. So, this is, I just want to present this to everybody, I think it's an interesting opportunity to look at, and maybe something that you want to have a look at.
Do we have one of those?
No, we don't, I mean.
Is that where we're getting to?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Want to give you plenty of them there before you get to the point of money shot, all right?
I got you.
All right. Um, so, yeah, there's where we're, we're talking, we're getting about how much we've done in the last couple of years, um, we think we've probably got another twenty-five thousand feet minimum of pipe bursting to do to get a street consent action order. The, uh, estimated cost for that, about five million dollars in our existing contract, so this money's all in our budget for the consent action order and the capital recovery program, um, makes a lot of money. So, here's what I'm getting to, um, the estimated contract cost to replace all that's five million dollars, we can do it, if we can do it for half the price, I said the third, if we can just, if we're concerned and say half the price, we do it for two and a half million, that's a two and a half million dollar cost savings. Equipment costs three hundred thousand dollars, and we need a new excavator to be able to lift that equipment in and out of the pits, and to dig a little bit deeper, that's another hundred thousand dollars. So, the investment's four hundred thousand dollars, the return's two-point-one million dollars, and that's a good thirty percent return. I do have people in-house that have lots of experience with this equipment, and know how to run it, and are very competent at it, and have all the faith in the world. So, we can continue to contract it out, or we can take a look at doing this in-house, so if, I presented this to the board committee, uh, I think they're going to move forward on this, if, uh, council is agreeing with that, then we will bring a budget adjustment next month to do the adjustment for this.
How long does this, well, a project like this take, I mean, is this years, is it?
This is years.
Okay.
I would, I would prob, it's probably ongoing too, because it's, it's probably ongoing too, because I'm assuming sewer mains break, just like always, and because of everything else, so I'm assuming this is going to be a longer-term savings, and these savings that you're projecting are just for the immediate of what you know needs to be replaced.
Yes, that's.
I'm masking back up now.
That's exactly right, you know, we, we've got at a minimum this amount of work to do, all the way through, you know, three neighborhoods blocks or whatever the case may be. You know, you're digging a pit at each end, you have to dig the services up, you run the pocket here, then you reattach and cover back up.
You're basically doing stuff underground that nobody can see.
That's right, and, and you have a lot that lets you risk damage to the utilities, to the property.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a big.
What's the, what's the upkeep, what's the upkeep cost on a machine like that? Is, is there, is there an upkeep cost on a, a machine like that, you know, because a lot of.
What is the cost for the machine?
Yeah, like, of the upkeep, like maintenance and things like that, just.
Yeah, it's normal.
Okay.
You're, you're going to, you're going to mess up stems, you know, you're going to have some of the smaller parts break on it, um, yeah, there.
Nothing major, though, that is regular, okay.
No, if you take care of that equipment, it, it can last fifteen, twenty years, you know, so.
And these are things that ADQ requires us to do and to check on, to stay in compliance, correct?
Yes, ma'am, so when, under the consent action order, we have to go out there, sewer system evaluation, we have to identify all places where we have infiltration and anything, we have to look at that. So, once they go out there, we have one contractor that does that sewer system evaluation, or they turn it over to us into our engineering contractor, we review that together, engineering contractors give us an opinion on what the fix is for those particular sections, whether it's, it's, uh, pipe bursting, or replacement, complete replacement, digging, trenching it, or upsizing it, or, or whatever the treatment, you know, casting places another methodology. Uh, but, but this is, this is a different one that, this, doing this approach, it's unique, there's not a lot of assistance or maintenance in-house, uh, you look up in the northeast part of the country, there's been one more, of these galaxies, or, and it's because they could save so much money, so. I'm not saying it's the end-all, end-all thing, but I think it's a great opportunity.
Kate, you're going to bring a proposal back next month?
Yeah, if, if.
Or whatever.
If no one, if no one has the issue with it at this point, what we, Julie and I and the mayor talked about is bringing the budget adjustment back next month, hopefully.
And I hope you bring it, because most of that's in our part of town, so.
Yeah, I did have that question asked, where will we be using it?
Yeah.
So, you can look at the oldest part of the city, and go toward the nearest part of the city, that's, that's how it's going to be.
I prefer the most mature part, the most mature part, the, the, the most mature part of the city. Not the oldest, mature.
That's a good way.
Thank you.
You know they call it old town.
Thank you.
And I do have a new water superintendent, and he's fixing anywhere between two to six leaks a day for the last month and a half to two months. So, I didn't budge him for some information to put in here tonight to update you, but I will bring something for next quarter for him to, uh, to update him with, so, any questions?
Going back real quick, uh, had somebody reach out the other day, do, does this, is that a city road between Denny's and Cracker Barrel? That, that one, that's not a city road, okay, because there, there.
That, that one, that, that one.
It's got. So, there's a, they're driving right between the two, but there's, it's striped, like, it, it looks like a city road, and so had some people reach out, because there's some major potholes in, going in there, and so they called me, and I said, I don't know, I'll have to ask Mark and.
Uh, if it's on the exit ramp side, that's Highway Department access road stuff right there, you know, i- is that where they ask us to extend that out for the D's connection?
It's in that area, but, but that road right there, from my memory, is platted on those pieces of property, uh, individually.
Yeah.
So, that's not a city road.
That's what I thought, I just.
Kind of like the hole of the Target parking lot.
Yeah, yeah.
That's dirty hole, yeah.
And there's a drainage issue right in there, probably where those potholes are.
I just don't, I told him I'd address it, so that's what I did.
I'll take a look at my. Also remind me, you mentioned signs, uh, in my neighborhood, I know there's a stop sign that got stolen the other day, so I need to get, get with you and get it repaired.
Okay, stop that delicious.
That's not funny.
Yeah, so, sorry, I saw that.
I'm sure it's some.
A great teammate who has too much time for not in school.
I don't have any other questions, thank you very much, I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark, appreciate that, uh, don't blame there are any other department reports, uh, several departments will be talking to you in, in a little bit with a variety of other things, so I guess now we move on to public comments. Uh, if we have any public comments, uh, approach, uh, state your name and your address, you'll have three minutes.
Okay.
And, uh, start working on getting the time ready.
From there?
You got it, okay.
From there?
Yes, sir.
He's, he's speaking for three of us, so can he talk at least nine minutes, nine minutes?
Three minutes per person, is what it is.
I'll keep it concise. I'm ready, we're ready?
Hand it over.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Okay, my name is Adam Davis, I live at twenty-three-ten Byron Drive, in Cambridge Place subdivision, a wonderful subdivision, I've looked through Bryant, looking at other homes as well, and I really think we have something special there. So, I'm, I'm here to protect that a little bit. I am, uh, here on behalf of myself and my wife Jennifer Davis, I'm here on behalf of Orlando Roland Chavez, he lives at twenty-two-twenty-three Byron Drive, and also for my mother and father, who lived in, there as well, at twenty-one-nineteen Byron Drive, and their names is Donald and Sandy Davis. Um, what I am here to talk about is lot, the lot condition of Lot Fourteen of Cambridge Place Phase One in the city of Bryant, it's also known as Twenty-two-O-three Byron Drive, it's owned by Joe Junior and Brenda Boyd. The con, current conditions, and we've distributed some pictures of, so that you can see, uh, there is just a lot going on there. Uh, there's furniture in the driveway, there's boxes that I, I don't know what's in them, it's not on my property, so I can't, I'm not going to go look, but there are boxes there that have been rained on, and they, they look like, the boxes look like trash, I don't know what's in them. Uh, there are blankets, tarps, there's plastic bags, I've seen Christmas decorations just laid in the yard, uh, there's some old lawn chairs that have ivies sitting on it as well, uh, there's some old, uh, an old table, um, it's like a card table or something to that effect, that's been rained on and bubbled up. Uh, there's unplanted trees that are still in the, full plastic, uh, pots, or whatever you want to call them, um, but it's, it's, our concerns are, number one, it's very unsightly. There, I do have concerns about sanitation, I know that, uh, my parents have had to, on multiple occasions, had to hire, uh, Adams Pest Control to come for roaches, and then also for rats, rats and mice, whatever you want to call them. Uh, a couple snakes as well, probably because the mice are around, so there's concerns there. The house, that lot resembles a hoard, um, I'm not saying they're hoarders, I have no expertise in that area, um, and it, another concern is that it could cause home values to diminish. I'm also concerned with the message that it gives to people considering developing in Bryant, uh, right behind us is the John's Wood subdivision, the, uh, Lander's Development is there, and so if we start, if Cambridge Place starts to diminish, that's going to affect them as well, and then I think that it leaves a, uh, some question as to developers, if they're willing to come on this side of I thirty. I think it could cause a selling frenzy for people to sell homes to get out, because they're afraid of their property value, it definitely disrespects the neighbors, it disrespects the citizens of Bryant, it also disrespects the office and authority of code enforcement. Uh, code enforcement has been called multiple times about this lot, uh, they have been out multiple times as well. That's it, okay.
May I ask a question? You can hand it over.
Sure.
May I ask a question, sir?
Oh, sure.
How long has it been like this?
Since the latter part of June.
Okay, thank you.
Video.
May I ask a question?
Appreciate it.
Do, do you guys have a POA of any sort?
I don't think it's properly formed, uh, we have a bill of assurance, but I, I don't know that we have any, any.
But you don't pay any dues for a POA?
We pay a hundred dollars a year, uh, and they use that to mow the common area and to pay the life insurance.
It's an appropriate issue.
Okay, thank you. Are you one to speak as well, sir? Name and address, if you don't mind, even though he, he mentioned it, just so we make sure we have it all right.
My name is Orlando Roland Chavez, I live at twenty-two-twenty-three Byron Drive, I moved to Bryant for my mail to retire, my home is paid for, I'm here for good. When I moved to this neighborhood, Dr. Dr. Neighbor, he said, this is a wonderful neighborhood, well, it keeps the yard clean, beautiful, this is the best neighborhood we think in Bryant. So, again, my house is paid for, this is my retirement home, I chose Bryant, and the neighborhood basically is such a nice neighborhood, except for that one neighborhood, Twenty-two-Zero-Three. It is, I've never seen such a horrendous yard in my entire life, I'm sixty-six years old, I swear I've never seen it, would anyone of y'all like that in your neighborhood? That's what I want to ask you. You know, there's many of us that have so said, it's been out there for a month and a half, and it's not getting any better, it's, it's become even worse. Again, got complaints, because there's the same kind of garbage in the backyard, the neighbor back there complains of bugs, rats, and snakes going into his yard, he's, he's throwing his hands up in the air, I had my house for sale, I, I said, you know, at a certain point, and I thought, no, I'm not going to move from this, from Bryant, I love Bryant. Why should I have to move because of one neighbor decides to do this? Again, I ask you, would any one of y'all want that in your neighborhood? That's all I got to say.
And you said this is in the backyard as well as the front yard?
Backyard is the, the same way, trashed out, there's trash out over the place in the backyard.
What's the response from the homeowner, if you, have you asked the homeowner?
I went and talked to Joe, and I talked to Joe before I ever came, I'm the one that went to play by.
Oh, that's all, more or so, yeah.
I'm the one that went to the code officer, and I talked to Joe, I told him, Joe, please, you can't have this, we can't have this in the neighborhood, you're disrespecting the neighbors, and he said, oh, I can't do nothing about it, it's all her, and there's nothing I can do about it, and that's the way it is. I told him, well, Joe, I'm going to have to go to the code officer, the code officer of the city of Bryant, because we can't have this in the neighborhood, look at it, you, who wants that in your neighborhood, who wants that in any neighborhood in Bryant? Bryant is drawn, it's a drawn city, we need to make sure that we keep code enforcement, uh, working on these types of situations where there's such a horrendous property, you know, it's what I call garbage, to me, it looks like a garbage dump, in fact, the city of Bryant, garbage dump is better to be.
City of Bryant does not have a garbage dump, that's.
Okay, well, the.
County does, the county does, but we don't.
Fantastic, whatever you call it. So, anyway, again, I ask you, would any one of y'all want that in your neighborhood? That's all I got to say, I'm retired here, I'm going to stay here, my house is paid for, I'm not going to let one neighbor move me out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, any other public comments? Again, state your name, address, and speak away.
I'm Eddie Wolf.
I'm Eddie Wolf, and I live at two-five-seven Prospect Park Circle. And I'm a representative of Prospect Park off of Dunn Road. As of this past, uh, Sunday, Ken Young, our builder, has turned over the P O A to us as the residents. And at the same time, we will get a notice that the city of Bryant no longer will pay for the electricity to run our street lights. It's fourteen hundred dollars a year, may not seem like a large amount to y'all, and in the scheme of the whole budget of Bryant, it is not. But to the majority of us that live out there, we're seniors and we're on fixed incomes. And we're paying off a bond issue as well as the P O A dues. Because Ken Young put up two sets of gates, it was deemed a private community. We do not have a fence around the community, we only have two gates. And, uh, because of that, we understand that we're now responsible for all the streets and any infrastructure problems within the community. I feel like that we pay the same mileage rate, the same taxes as anyone else in the city of Bryant. And yet, when we're told that we do not have access to the upkeep or whatever that the rest of the city has because of two gates. Now, there is the possibility in the future that we may elect to take down the gates and ask Bryant to take it on. Which really will become a further expense for the city of Bryant. Where if you guys would just pay our electric bill of fourteen hundred dollars a month, I don't believe it will become an issue of us taking down the gate. But we feel like that because we are citizens of Bryant, but we are being treated differently because our builder was allowed to put up two sets of gates. I'm asking you to reconsider fourteen hundred dollars in the budget to pay the electric bill for the few streetlights that we have in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, should I read this one now since it's connected with that same?
Feel free, it's down for public comments if you want.
Okay, uh, in respect to Ms. Wolf's, uh, statement, I also have a statement from Leland Smith at one forty-six Prospect Park. Andrea Tompkins, one forty-nine Prospect Park Drive, Kathy Miller, one fifty Prospect Park Drive, Sarah Sykes, three oh-eight Prospect Park Loop. B J May at one fifty-three Prospect Park Drive. Since they're all related to the same thing, I'm going to read just one, but they all say about the same thing. This one is, uh, good morning, I am a Prospect Park neighborhood owner. We had a P O A meeting yesterday and learned that the city wants to stop paying for our city lights. It is my understanding that the reason is because we are a gated community. My husband, daughter, and I lived in this neighborhood for almost seven years, and were the first ones to own the home we live in. We selected the neighborhood because of its proximity to a good elementary school and also because the gated community gave us added sense of security to raise our daughter. My husband and I obviously invested in this area, both personally and financially, we are homeowners and we pay taxes on our home toward our schools and toward local businesses that we, uh, patronize in this area. Prospect Park's streetlight and street maintenance should continue to fall under the purview of the city of Bryant. And we should not be penalized just because we have a security gate at the interest to our neighborhood. We are just as much a part of Bryant community as our neighbors who live at, outside the gate. Thank you for your time and your service on the Bryant City Council. And this was Andrea Tompkins, one forty-nine Prospect Park. And I will submit the other letters to go on file as well, because they talk about the same thing. And, um, I would like for, uh, maybe the planning department to send the, um, requirements of streets and everything to, um, Ms. Tompkins, since I read hers.
Okay. We can work on that.
And, uh, that a way they know the street widths and the street, what our requirements are. Um, and that a way they know, uh, what it entails. When you're coming from a private community to a public community, that there's a little bit more to it than taking down a gate. But those were some that I had received and they were not able to be here due to everything, they didn't feel comfortable, so that's the reason I'm submitting those.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
Were, were those streets ever deeded over to the city like normal developments were not?
No, they've never been deeded over.
Okay, so.
They are privately owned streets.
Privately owned streets, so the issues with privately owned streets that we're dealing with?
Yes.
Okay, so any streets in the city of Bryant that aren't deeded over to the city, this should also apply to them?
If it's a gated community, yes, I understand.
Who determined, who determined that? Who, who determined that, because I don't recall passing anything related to that.
It's, I think it goes back to the, the streets. So, if the streets are private, in most cases where the streets are public streets, that's where the, the lighting is paid for by the city. But places where there's private streets, those are, um, private, uh, lights as well.
I understand this, but who said about gated communities, because I don't recall passing anything related to that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know where the, the narrative with gated communities has come into it. From my understanding, it's strictly whether the streets are private or public.
I understand that, but who, who said the gated community was a, was a factor in this?
It might have been me misinterpreting, could, just because there's a gate that I, I, it might have been my assumption that the gate made it a private street.
I don't see it.
There's other private streets.
I don't see it that way, there's other private streets in the city. And I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I kind of am, because.
I understand.
I don't, somebody's using interpretation, I can't stand this, somebody's using interpretation and said, if it's gated, then it's different, and it's really not different.
Okay.
It's a, it's a private street, a private street's a private street, it's a private street. So that means, there's several neighborhoods in Bryant that I could think of that aren't city streets, and if that's the case, then it either applies to all or none.
I know we've, I know this was discovered through an audit, uh, that was being conducted of some electric bills or something like that. Is how this was discovered, and I'm sure they're still working on that, and I'm sure other places will be discovering as well.
I have, I have a couple of questions in regards to that too. And number one, I wanted for the record, I did have a couple of other residents other than what Ms. Miller stated that talked to me about the, uh, light situation at Prospect Park as well that couldn't come tonight. But, um, you know, when we talk about the private streets, um, what I wanted to ask is, what kind of notification would the residents receive? Say, for example, in this case Prospect Park, would they be given any kind of notice? Or in this case, since she's, Ms. Wolf stated that, um, Ken Young was turning over the property, the P O A to, to, uh, to, to the residents. What kind of notification do they get, and would it be who, the city to maybe do the full audit of what all private streets we have? And then send out a notification to all of those at one time, say like, starting January the first or something, just to give them some time to prepare their budget at home?
It may be, I do know the notice was given by the, I think it was a power company that gave them the notice for, but it was given to Ken Young, I do know that.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't.
He got that notification before he turned over the P O A to the, to the residents.
So at the end of the day, if the gate comes down, then we don't have an issue.
Well, at the end of the day.
No, 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 no.
Still private street.
Private street till the city adopts it.
So they'd have to de- deede it over to, to the city for it to become a public street then?
The city would have to do a roll test, determine it's applicable to our standards, then it would have to be done.
Got you.
And that, but that would apply to, that would apply to all streets that are private streets within the city.
Got you.
If, if that's the interpretation of the, of the rule.
Correct, correct.
That doesn't say anything about gated communities, but if that, if that's the case, then, then that would be the case.
So if you had a neighborhood that was developed, that's in the territorial jurisdiction of the city, that's not technically?
Ours yet.
It's not ours.
No.
So you're talking a lot of, you're talking a lot of streets that, that would affect.
Yeah, so those street lamps the city wouldn't pay for either.
Right. So all the, all the, all those streets that are private.
Now, if it's a council's wish, we can, we can reverse that, I suppose, and we can pay for those lights.
I, I would like to, I, I would like to see us pay for the lights until we had a full audit and see how many streets and lamps we're talking about. And give the residents at least a ni- at least one quarter to prepare for, for their budget. I mean, I would like to see us not do it immediately so that they have time to prepare their household income accordingly, if, if that's the case that the, you know, city.
Or up to January one.
Yeah.
Pay for the lights for twelve years, why now? And especially when we're talking on with the P O A.
Well, I, I think.
And then we had, had a chance to, like, officers, and we're being hit with that.
I honestly think that just happened to be a coincidence, and there was no malicious intent from the city or anybody else with regard to that. I really think that was just a coincidence. Uh, but, you know, the audit was being conducted this year apparently, and, and that's when it was discovered, so that's when we started that process.
Yeah, I just.
I appreciate if you didn't get some, um, research.
Does that need a motion?
We'd have to add to the, uh, we'd have to add it to the agenda first.
Well, it's already, it's already, it's already in the budget, right, I mean, so it's already being funded, so it's.
I just caution us about the approach we take to, because there are a number of gated private streets with lights on them. And if we're going to pay for one, you know, and I understand that we've been paying for it, I'm not against us continuing to do something until we research it and all.
Right.
We could be setting precedent that we want to be cautious about.
I'm just saying, I'm sorry, I'm just saying equities.
Oh, I understand.
Okay.
Yeah.
I understand, I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm just saying we got to be cautious.
I think we're, I think we're agree, I know what you're saying, I appreciate that.
And, and I think that's what Carlton is saying as well, basically, we just want to get the full picture, you, you want to get the full picture before a decision is really made on that.
Make sure we don't pick on word for word for you.
And that's not a problem, we can work on that.
Okay.
I have a couple of public comments once we get off the gate, sir.
I think you had a comment in the back.
A gentleman in the back there had a comment, he had his hand up.
Can you come up here and, and speak into the microphone, sir, that way we can hear you better and get you on the record?
This is my office, no fun.
No.
That's a good place.
My name is James Parks, I live at three hundred Prospect Park. And I'm, you're obviously complaining about the same thing. Uh, and, and you're right, fair is fair, you know, if you're going to take one off, you need to take them all off. If you look back and notice Allen Midtown was actually developed at the same time Prospect Park was. And it was initially advertised as a gated community.
What, and I didn't know that.
No, uh.
It's not gated now, I do know that.
My same person, as a matter of fact.
Right.
Anyway, so.
We won't go there.
If, uh, if we're going to take our lights off, let's take Midtown off.
And if, if that's the case.
Uh, Hurricane Bill, Hurricane Three, yeah, Hurricane whatever it is, let's take them all off.
And if, and if that's the case of the way the art works out, then that's one of the, with our, that's.
I don't mind paying that electric bill. Uh, it's going to make it a little tighter for the, uh, P O A, but, but we can do it. Uh, but I want to be treated fair, I want to pay my taxes.
Sure.
And not give any benefit. I, I think, unless I'm absolutely mistaken, that's actually what started Revolutionary War, with taxation without representation, you know? Uh, and we still play to the, the limits of the flag today, uh, and I appreciate that. But I won't be treated fair.
Absolutely.
You know, that's all I'm asking, is to treat us fair, you know? Uh, we, uh, finally got the road finished up at Prospect Park. Uh, and I'm pretty sure that, you know, we, uh, pay a lot of ta- or not, right, we pay relatively speaking, we pay our fair amount of taxes, you know? Just to treat us fair, that's all we're saying, you know? I appreciate your kind effort, I appreciate the comp, the, the job that the fire department and the police department do. And you guys do a decent part too. Now, this case you may be wrong, but treat us fairly, that's all I'm saying, thank you.
Mistakes might happen sometimes. Thank you, sir.
The man might be.
Any other public comments?
Yes, I do.
Come on up, sir. Hopefully you'll state your name and your address.
My name is Joe Boyd, Master Sergeant, retired, U S Army. Right now, we have people complaining just because my wife and I wanted to help our neighbors. All of that stuff that these people see in my driveway, we come out of their house.
We know that.
If anything, you should have come over and said.
Address the council, please, sir, not him. Address the council, please, not him.
Right, go ahead. I'm just saying, if anything, you should have come over and asked, Joe, can I help you? You know, we was helping our neighbors, you know, that's not right, what was he telling you? You know, I would have did it, and I did do it, it took me three days to get all of that stuff. If you see in my driveway, if you go by my house, out of Darcey Brown attic. And she wanted us, my wife, Brenda, to help her, you know, kind of like distribute the stuff. My wife wanted to take the stuff and use it to support these guys right here and the police, and she been doing that. You know, I just don't appreciate what I'm hearing right now, because it's not right, and nobody's. You know, and we are working on that, we already got a citation. Code enforcement knows, and they've been really nice to my wife, Brenda and I, giving us a little time to clean up, and we are going to clean up. I just got all stomach cancer. Twenty-eight consecutive doses of radiation, eight cycles of chemo, and I'm still here, I feel like running a fire cake.
I bet you can't kill you.
You know, that's it, I don't want to waste no more of your time, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
I just wanted, again, my part for a second. Um, when the Navy guys complained, we went over there, we made contact with them. Um, we did give them time to clean it up, it's only been a month. From the first complaint I have is six point three. We have them court date, they've been written citation, court trebada, we have done literally all we can do. And with my understanding which, uh, is you want to come here tonight to get ordinance checks, not to bend up my apartment. So, is that's what I'm.
Talk to the council, sir, I need the ordinance, the ordinance is in there.
Don't, don't start that. Let him start that.
Excuse me, sir, excuse me, sir, it's his, it's his public, it's not to speak, please, I understand, he shouldn't have done that either, so.
All I'm saying is, I talked to you five minutes before the meeting, you said you guys have done a careful job.
Great, great, it's okay, great.
Good, right enough.
And then.
All right, brother.
I know.
All right, brother.
It's okay, it's okay.
I just want everyone to know we've done, we followed ordinance duty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Good evening, my name is Brenda Cunningham Boyd, I live at twenty-two oh-three Byron Drive. And I was only helping my neighbors in the front of me, Darcey Brown, and my neighbor behind me. Now, the problem is that I have no idea what the problem is other than I do have this stuff in my driveway. I work day and night to clean it up. Anybody that passes through there at three o'clock in the morning, I'm up cleaning up my yard. It's not that I want it to be a mess. So I got a mess, I know I got to clean it up, you think I like unsightly, I don't, Mr. Chavez. He's got a problem with people. And I can't believe that he even served in the military to watch somebody's back.
Please, just keep the comments about the.
And, and, and I have to say what I got to say. Because when they talk about rats and roaches and this and that, why don't I have a problem with them? Sound like they're coming from their own houses, and they're worried about what's on my driveway. That's because they're nosy. They don't know what's in the boxes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
But I do.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm working on it every day.
Yes, ma'am, and, and my coenforcement understands that, and they're working with you, so.
But I really don't appreciate them coming up here with a bunch of lies.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I do have it on my driveway, but they don't know my movement. They don't know what I do. And why would they know what's in my backyard? Let you climb the fence like you took something off my truck. Yeah, what?
D, D G. Uh, uh, well, it's not, we're not going there late, as you know.
Well, I'm just telling you, sir, when I know I bought a brand-new heater, and it's been on my car on the back of the truck for three days, loads know I bought it, and everybody in the neighborhood know I bought it, and it come up missing.
Did you report a stolen device?
I sure did.
Okay, good. That's what you needed to do on that. Now, are you saying that? Sit down, sir. Sit down, sir. Sit down. Sit down, sir. Accusing him. Sit down, sir. Sit down, sir.
And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Moving on.
I think Butch has.
I've got a couple.
You got a couple, okay, Butch.
And I got one.
Go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Y'all are rest one, who goes next?
You can, you call first.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Mine are about parks and rec. Uh, Ms. Kathy Lou Allen, lives at three oh one Northwest Fourth Street in Bryant. And she encourages us to support the funding from the, uh, A and P funds for the bathrooms and playgrounds at Ashley and Alcoa Parks, and thinks it's a great thing for our city to continue to make those improvements. And she's extremely proud of our parks, and she's one of the original people from the city that helped start those parks. Uh, the other one's from Ms. Joyce Boswell, seven hundred Boswell Road. And hers is basically the same thing. I just ask the council to prayerfully consider funding for the bathrooms and playgrounds at Ashley Park and Alcoa Park because of how important they are to the city and the citizens and the visitors that come here. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Butch.
Uh, mine is from Kay Ernie, twenty-nine eleven Andrew Drive. She says, I live in Forest Cove subdivision, moved to Bryant in nineteen ninety-four because it was a well-kept city and was out of the country. However, I noticed more and more people have their motorhomes parked in the front yards of Forest Cove. One guy has his pontoon boat in the front yard, plus he also parks his recovery truck on the street, usually with the repossessed car attached. Next to him, a guy has put a gra- has put gravel in his entire front yard because he has a tree trimming business, and he allows all of his business trucks to park in the front yard. More and more people are not keeping yards up, letting grass grow a foot tall. Solely Bryant is looking more and more rugged. Is there anything the city can do? And that is from Kay Ernie.
Any more public comments with regard to? Now, we're moving on to old business. Engineering's up. We're gonna get an update on the Bryant Parkway and probably a couple of other things.
Yeah. Who wants to talk Parkway? I don't like it. Okay, little background. Uh, we've kinda taken a little bit slower approach on the Parkway design. And the little background is there is our resident rainmaker has found some bad money to help pay for it. Uh, but what that's done is that's moved the, uh, agency that's reviewing this process from the FAA to the Federal Highway Commission, and that's gonna be reviewed by RDOT. So our consultants, Garber, had to kinda go back and reformat our drawings and, and our environmental assessment to get that to, to them for their review. And that added, the initial estimate was that we're gonna add something like two months to the process. I think they've actually stepped that up somewhat. Uh, we received the environmental assessment, which is kind of a key piece. We received that last Friday. Uh, this Friday, we should have the sixty percent plans that'll go to RDOT as well, that the federal highways will review. Uh, that out front of you is the, uh, sixty percent roll block of the roadway that we will acquire for this. It happens in a package that's sent to the county. Um, let's see, that falls pretty much along. Uh, also, I have it. Did not get this in the agenda because I didn't get it till like Wednesday of last week, but this is the schedule that we're currently looking at now. And we'll go over that.
Ted, while you're pressing that out, we have got approval from FAA.
We've got kind of the verbal go-ahead.
Kinda, still kinda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And so, I, I mean, I still take that as optimistic that we're, we're gonna get this in the end.
Okay.
Of course, FAA is gonna want a lead agency.
What?
But they do have to do the land release that we purchased from the year before.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, oh, did you read it?
So things have changed a bit. Okay.
This is almost like a voice search.
I got nothing. I'm good. Thanks for asking.
Well, I'll go through it. I'll, I'll tell you the highlights. You can study this later on.
Line, line out a force, please.
So the sixty percent plans we already will get by Friday this next week. FAA approval has the, the real plan released by the second quarter of two thousand twenty-one. So, you know, there's, there's a review process that's gonna be involved there. Uh, with the FHA final review, probably okay, would be fourth quarter of this year. So hopefully by the end of December, we'll be kind of good to go on that. Uh, release for bid construction, so we'll get the ninety percent plans at the first quarter, and then by second or third quarter of next year, we'll have the final one hundred percent review, uh, for, supplemental for bids. We anticipate somewhere in the nature of eighteen months. I think it's more like a two-year deal, uh, of being completed possibly by the second or third quarter of two thousand twenty-three.
I will say with regard to the FAA and FHA, once those documents are submitted to each of those agencies as we go through there, I'll be using, uh, Fred Scholz's office. He's offered to do what he can to help with that, to help try to push that through as rapidly as we can in this environment.
Yes, we did really come prepared to talk about budgets on this. There's more to come on that. Uh, we did like, I pointed out earlier, we had changed one, one and a half million dollar grant with the pot- potential for three million dollars more. So it was well worth the additional time and effort and putting in to seek that type of money.
Good.
And, and there's other things that we're looking at in addition to that. I think we will try to do that at a separate meeting, a potential workshop meeting to discuss that because of, now let Truett speak to that. I think some of the requirements that we ran is that we have resolution on, on where the money is.
Thanks, Ted. So as Ted was alluding to, we got another grant coming up, and that's what we're working on currently. Um, this is through Metro Plan, but with that, it's much more stringent, um, application than it was last time. Uh, we're also gonna have more competition, so we got a better application. And part of that is, uh, our funding source, so, uh, we need to nail down. Um, we know what the difference is, or we're working on the difference, what that's gonna be, but we have to nail down a funding source for that difference in order to be very competitive with the grant. Um, they really wanna know if they're gonna put skin in the game, that we're gonna ask in at the end of the game to, to finish the grant application out with. So that's something that we're working with Joy with and, uh, and Mark, uh, to make sure that we've got a game plan. But we expect to bring something to you rather quickly on that, um, so that we can get it, uh, looked at for the grant application.
I would hope by next council meeting, honestly.
My, yeah, my plan is with the.
There's a grant in September, correct?
Right. Grants due at the end of September. Um, what I'd like to do is the resolution that y'all would pass, normally pass for a grant application, would have those funding mechanisms inside of it so that it's very clear to the, the graders of the grant where the funding's gonna come from, um, to match those funds. But that's something we're, we're working on right now. I should have you, a further conversation come next council meeting.
Truett, I wanna ask a off-the-wall question.
Okay.
You are very capable at what you do, but do you need any help to get us the best grant application possible? I know you and, uh, Dana work really hard on this, we both, but do you need any extra help to get an A-plus grant application?
I think we, we've got, it's, it's, the team's grown, especially with this application. It's more than just me working on this one. Um, I know Joy is involved in the finance part of it. Ted, um, gets really involved, too, so, um, I hate to say it's, it's just me or Dana. It's, it's really turned into a team effort. We're working really hard to get this done. And, and Colton, Colton, Colton's become instrumental in, in it as well. So, um, I appreciate, you know, what you're saying. I think we've got a really good opportunity to get a really good application. The mayor, Ted and I, said it at a workshop that Metro Plan had, um, last week. Um, they talked about the new grading parameters, and I think we've got a really good opportunity for that. Uh, to give you, I think, a little glimpse into what makes that parameter different and what makes it important is that Metro Plan's grant applications are starting to move towards more of having complete streets. You know, this has been a conversation that's been going on for a while. Um, but now, if you submit a road grant to them and it does not have a certain degree of pedestrian access along it, it automatically fails. So having a trail or two sidewalks on either side with a certain amount of buffer becomes a necessity. And it doesn't become, you know, oh, I'd like this to happen. It, it has to happen to get those federal funds from Metro Plan.
And you've covered those bases well recently.
In, in our, right, in, in our case, you know, we're, we're still planning on putting, uh, the trail down the side of the Parkway. Um, you know, we've already applied our, with, for, from RDOT for funds from that. Uh, so we're waiting to hear back on those to see what happens. But our game plan is, we're working towards, if we get the RDOT grants, that's great, and that will save us some money. If not, we're still gonna have a solution to the problem, um, so that we can still be competitive with the Metro Plan grant.
Thank y'all very much for all that you're doing on this to.
Appreciate it.
Get this Parkway complete. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions for them relating to Parkway? If not, we'll just roll on down this agenda into finance with Joy Black.
Bring in the kid. I saw the baby.
Mayor, I request a.
With her trusty sidekick, Camber.
I saw the baby back there. Mayor.
Mayor, I request a quick five-minute break.
Five-minute break. Uh, they want a five-minute break? We'll have a five-minute break. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's the activity that they have front.
You there?
Nope.
She was getting a line kind of on YouTube, so she didn't know she was getting yelled at.
That, that's okay. They took a five-minute break. Tell, uh, five, Joy, you got five minutes.
I need to walk up for her.
Took a five-minute break. That's keeping.
You might can pass.
Hey, we can't see.
It's a lady. So, so I got this city. She's so pretty.
It's your honor. Out front, the people are scared of me. Is it okay out front?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You need to stand up.
Yeah, you got, we got army people.
You need to just kinda go, hey.
How's Camber?
Hi, sweetie. Aw, what does she think about all this stuff? Hey, Camber. Hi. She's walking? Oh, no, it can't be.
Yeah, and I was gonna have it.
Wow.
I think she's got too tired now, and she's tired.
Hey, I'm a big fan of In the Stroller.
Yeah.
That's where I get brandies a lot. I had to chase her one time, one of hers in Target. From one end of the store to the other because she took off. In a dead run.
I'm betting that that's not very far out, because she's, she was out there at any of the offices that were open. She was going in, and I was coming out. I'm like, no, 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 no. I'm like, go on there. No, no, no. And so, we've been, uh.
No, 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 no.
She went around, around the house. She knows though, you know?
No, 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 no. And there was, there was a little bit of a.
There she is. There she is.
I can't believe she's walking already.
Yeah, she's.
Girl.
Yesterday, Monday, the first day, she was, uh, walked into the back there, and she was, and, 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 uh. One of the women that's been watching, and she was like, it's been so long or whatever.
Look, look. She was with.
Yeah, she's, she's, she's gone bye, bye.
Yes, oh, that's a hard one. It is hard.
Got ten minutes left. Two-minute warning.
Are we still on?
Yes, we still are. That's fine.
Are we still on? So watch what you say.
Yeah.
He's home. Oh, she's off. He's probably right now. Boy, come on, he's a dog.
I can't believe she's already walking. That's amazing. It seems like she was just born a few months ago. Just a couple of months ago.
One minute.
One minute, you know, one minute.
I'm just looking at these. I'm here.
Oh. One minute. So one minute?
And one?
When will she be one?
She's already one. She's kind of one.
Isn't that cute? She ain't eighteen.
Look at her. She's checking it all out.
Oh, wow.
Fifteen seconds left in the five-minute recess.
Recession.
Yeah, she's about to take control of the meeting. What's she doing down there? What's she doing down there?
Camber. She goes in there.
Tom.
Where is everybody?
I waited around the bathroom, so.
Yeah. Where did, where did Bush, where did Bush, where did Butch go?
Did you see Bill over there?
He was looking for a basketball. I always something that's good.
Well, that's out here. I heard it at my spot. Camber, she could. She got a good job.
I think she better, she better than me.
We're gonna entertain her one from on the top.
I can do it. What's your name? I forgot.
Still missing Carlton and Wood.
Camber?
Camber.
Camber. How you doing? Spooky old man right here.
He like a ball. He like a ball, man.
And she go, oh, my. Oh, my.
She likes a ball, man. Just a ball.
We're, we're really loving this. This is on video. Yeah.
I don't care. I'm good, Bo.
All right, we're still waiting on Carlton and Butch.
I'm good. How are you? I know. I know. What do you got there? Got some toys?
We wanna go ahead and proceed without them?
You got some toys? Yeah.
Did I go up that way? But it's in.
That's fun.
I think just one moment and I'll be here.
Okay.
That's funny.
Were they in line?
They had to wait, and I put it that way.
Is that your foot? Your foot?
Uh, here it comes. Okay.
Yeah. Need to turn it, that way so the camera can see her. It's more fun, isn't it?
Is she on camera?
I don't know.
Look out there. Is she on it?
Not her back is. You could be a movie star, buddy.
Yeah.
Randy Row.
She's already a star. She's already a star. She's been in lots of movies.
Well, yeah.
She goes on Zoom with the best women. All right, we're back from our little short little recess. Uh, so now we're back on the new business. Uh, so now we're back on the new business with finance and Joy Black presenting the information relating to finance.
Okay, so I've got a few things on the first item, which is my regular monthly report. But there's just a few items to note before you guys accept it, or if you want to accept it. Pages two and seven reflected timing, journal entry change correction. We accidentally keyed seven million one hundred and ninety-four oh eight for four parks gas bill instead of the amount that it should've been. And that was reversed out and corrected in June for this report. But it is a difference from the system, so I always tell I bring a difference from the system to you. I always bring it to you guys. Page two, the two hundred and eighty-five dollars was transferred temporarily to cover court costs while court was closed, and this has now been transferred back this month. Page three, as I mentioned earlier, we have planned to close the fire donations account like we did the PD donations account. We rolled these two funds into consolidated general fund cash. The auditors have approved this change. Uh, page four, there will be sixty-seven dollars corrected on the fund balance of fund ten that you'll see next month. Page nine, um, we completed this report without the bank statement for the AP bank account because it never arrived in the mail for some reason. We since then set that up online so we can pull the statements down. I called the bank and the only activity this month was three hundred and eight dollars' worth of interest revenue that's been filled in this report. There's a small outage again in the Stormwater Capital Fund that I have to investigate, but I think that it's probably an issue to check. And, um, we still have obviously some things that we're holding doing budget adjustments to, but for a good reason because so far we don't have to do sales tax adjustments. And I'm just waiting to do everything at once. And so, um, that's that. And then, while I'm going ahead and doing my announcements, I did receive notice from the bank, our main bank, we do deal with several different banks, but our main one is Regions Bank. And because of the drops in the Fed funding rate, they're gonna need to make a change to our contract. The general fund account is gonna no longer receive interest revenue, and they would use this to offset the bank charges. This is, as you guys are aware, we have not received interest revenue on our two largest accounts for a long ways, or for some time since before I came to work for the city as part of the contract. This general fund will now be in that grouping. We're exploring alternative things to deal with this change over the next six months, so hopefully this will only be a temporary change. Um, does anybody have any questions on any of that or on the report in general?
I think it's wonderful that our sales tax revenues are shopping local and staying up.
Yes.
Yes, me too.
Thank you very much to the residents.
Do I have a motion to approve the presentation and approval of the twenty-twenty-June year-to-date city financial report?
Some of...
Have a motion, a second, to approve the twenty-twenty-June year-to-date city financial report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, so I think number two is an ordinance, but it's just a clerical thing because last month I brought in as a change, an amendment to my original document, and it was gonna take as much time to do that as it was to do it on separate limits. So, you guys have had this for two months now, the list of court items that they want to deal with in the destruction, which is more company to destruction once we set the date. And so, does anybody have any questions on this list?
Motion to suspend the rules and approve with first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. Have a motion, a second, to suspend the rules and read first, second, and third reading by title only. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. An ordinance providing for the permission to destroy certain specified city records per city policy and resolution twenty fifteen dash five and for other purposes, including departments, court.
Motion, do you need a motion to adopt, sir?
Yes.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to adopt. All in favor, roll, I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Billings, please?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Gladnassen, Henson?
Yes.
Rodeo?
Yes.
Permianer?
Yes.
Tickenboppel?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes. Because this doesn't have an emergency clause, does it? Okay. This is ordinance twenty twenty dash nine.
Okay, thank you. And my last two items, that's the same before every year, it's the...
Better hurry, Mom.
The two ordinances on real property and personal property. Um, there are no changes this year, as there have not been for several years in the past. So, um, does anybody have any questions on those?
That was real estate property.
Yes.
That's not a... First one was real property.
But that's not an increase?
No, it's, they're all, they're standing the same, what's happened since the nineteen-eighties.
Since the nineteen-eighties. So, we've had forty, forty years without a residential tax increase, just for the record.
Motion to suspend the rules, approve first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second, then.
We have a motion, a second, to suspend the rules and read first, second, and third reading by title only. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. An ordinance letting a tax on all real property in the city of Bryant, Saline County, Arkansas for the purposes provided by law.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Have a motion, a second, to adopt, roll call vote.
Billings, please?
Yes.
Rodeo?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gladnassen, Henson?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Billings, um, Tickenboppel?
Yes.
Pass. Oh, Permianer?
Yes, that's him.
Pass.
She'll get everybody in just a minute. Motion passes, there's no emergency clause, it should be ordinance twenty twenty dash ten.
Joy, does she know how to take her shoes off yet? That's good because that's what she's doing.
Coming off quick.
She has learned to walk, though.
Motion. Motion to suspend the rules and read first, second, and third by title only.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and read first, second, and third reading by title only. And a second for that, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, an ordinance letting a tax on all personal property in the real, in the city of Bryant, Saline County, Arkansas for the purposes provided by law.
Motion to adopt, second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt, all in, or a roll call vote, please.
Billings, please?
Yes.
Tickenboppel?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Uh, Rodeo?
Yes!
Thank you, sir. Gladnassen and Hawke?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Permianer?
No, it's still here, it's here, yes.
Still here, okay, okay.
This is ordinance twenty twenty dash eleven.
Thanks, Mom.
Thank you. Thanks for the entertainment, too.
Thank you, Joy. Have a safe drive home.
Good luck with the shoes.
She just started walking, by the way.
Wow, wow.
She didn't love the shoes.
The shoes aren't popular.
Yes, I saw that. All right, next up is, uh, is the result of the workshop we had earlier this month relating to AMP funds and using some of those funds to fund some parks projects. We did hear a couple of public comments about them today, so...
Well, if you could hear her, she said about this.
Yeah, Miss Little and Miss Boswell, I think, have some good news.
The signs?
The signs are ordered.
Thank you.
They fabricated, yes, sir.
Because the original stone that they wanted?
Well...
Okay, I don't wanna know that.
Yes, they picked out stones, we don't know if it's still there, so I'm gonna go back and pick out some more stones. But they're happy with that.
Okay.
So, if y'all remember at the workshop, we looked at kind of basically what we had, and this was the spreadsheet, I believe, that we encountered. And one of the options that we looked at was changing the Alcoa Forty rotations to be a bathroom and pavilion. And I went, you guys asked me with going back and finding out what that was gonna cost. Uh, I had to extrapolate some numbers because I'm finding that steel prices are getting unreliable again. And a lot of metal building people are not, are a little hesitant to quote on anything that's longer than like two weeks of lead time. So, uh, that, this was from the workshop, and it has a total, what's the number? Uh, it should be the same number.
Okay.
But this is the difference in price, this is the, uh, this is the, uh, pavilion with the bathroom in it. If you remember, I presented some drawings associated with that.
This is the Ashley one, right?
No, this is the Alcoa Forty.
I call forty, I'm sorry, yes, my, that's what I meant to say. I get them mixed up all the time.
And so, the price came out to be someone in the nature of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And that's still an estimate. I actually think we can do better than that. But that puts our, kind of our total accumulated cost of those things at like six hundred...
Two thousand.
Six hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, if I recall, I think we have something in the nature of like seven hundred and three thousand left in AMP, and we could still, thank you. We can bridge that gap where I could have been hit.
So, the cost for basically retroing the existing pavilion thing out there as opposed to just installing bathroom is just a six thousand dollar budget.
Two-personnel bathroom, that's gonna be just real restrictive. But, uh, the pavilion would be a lot nicer. I think the open space on it is gonna be something like twenty-seven foot by forty-eight. It won't look as attractive as the pavilion that Chris has got lined out for Bishop Park, but it will be very functional. It'll be a keystone along the parkway trail that will continue and connect. I think Chris has got some great vision of using that as part of the venue for bicycle riders and things like that.
Motion to approve items five, six, seven, and eight with the recommended pavilion upgrades.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve items five, six, seven, eight with the recommended pavilion upgrades?
I have a question. On Alcoa Forty and Ashley Park, is there an advantageous reason we do both of them at the same time? Or can, or will they be like, will the contractor probably do one and then finish it?
Well, the, the original thing was to have a cookie cutter designed that both of them were the same. Since Alcoa Forty is gonna be like a retrofit, we'll probably have to take a little bit more time to develop, develop the plans to renovate the building and then put the steel rooftop over top of it. So, I would say you're probably not gonna get that as soon. So, I haven't released the contracts where the Ashley Park bathroom soon as it might.
Question. So, you led by saying that, um, steel prices were astronomically high right now.
Well, they're, they're...
You said they were uncertain.
They're uncertain.
But, I don't know what I've heard. I'm just saying that on Alcoa Forty, that is not a necessity right now, is it? I mean, could it, could it be something that we, we hold off on and say, let's wait just a little bit longer? Maybe, maybe prices, because everything will fluctuate.
Sure, sure.
And could it be something that we, we say, let's wait on Alcoa Forty for a little bit just to see if those prices come down and we can build it at a cheaper cost?
Well, I, I think that's an excellent idea. In fact, it's gonna take us a little bit more design time because we're retrofitting a building. It's gonna take us, you know, a month just to get the design out. Maybe save the time to settle down. The other beauty of that is, is we can probably renovate the bathrooms and get that portion done and not do the steel building immediately and then come put the steel building on top of it. So, there's, there's some options there. So, yeah, definitely, we can look at phasing that.
That was, that was why I was asking that question too, because I'm for the other projects. But if you don't have to do both bathrooms at the same time, why do we need to put Alcoa?
Yeah.
One thing I would say about that is, having been in the construction business for forty years before I got into real estate, uh, and the majority of our steel comes from overseas where we're not doing very well right now with our relationships, that price is gonna continue to escalate for quite a while.
Yeah.
There's not gonna be no fluctuation.
It can be unforeseen. I mean, I know during the period of when China, China was, I'm getting on another subject, they were buying all scrap metal prices, it was hard to get in, and that's kind of what we're seeing again, so... So, any other questions?
So, if we approve them all, it puts the ball on your court to decide which direction we need to go, at what time?
You're right, exactly. We'll try to come up with a schedule and...
You, under the guidance of the mayor, I didn't say that exactly correctly, but yes.
Yes.
Well, I'd like to approve some of them, but if we're gonna vote them all together, then...
Well, I can withdraw, we'll do it one at a time.
No, I mean, it was your motion, you can keep them all.
I said I'll withdraw it.
Yeah.
If you got reservations, we'll do it that way, it's not me.
Not a problem.
Take them one at a time. I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
Motion is second, I've been withdrawn, so...
Thank you.
Motion to approve item number five as stated on our proposal for the Bishop Park Festival electric.
We have a motion, a second, to approve Bishop Park Festival electric change order. Originally approved thirty-five thousand for this project, total project cost will be fifty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy cents. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Motion to approve Bishop Park Pavilion, uh, number six on the agenda.
Have a motion to approve Bishop Park Pavilion change order. Originally approved a hundred and eleven thousand, a hundred and fifty-nine dollars and nine ninety cents. Total cost of project will be a hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. So, I have a second.
Second.
Motion a second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Motion to approve the Ashley Park upgrades?
With the recommended pavilion.
Yes, sir.
Oh, Ashley, yeah, that's the wrong one, that's Alcoa Forty. Alcoa Forty, that's next.
Ashley Park over here.
He said Ashley.
So, you're, you're jumping to number eight.
Number eight.
I'm sorry, I don't have, I can't see the agenda because my eyes are horrible.
Alcoa Forty's next.
Alcoa Forty's next.
I'll, I'll hold off then, sorry.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve that with the recommended, uh, pavilion, yes, ma'am.
We have a motion to approve Alcoa Forty Park upgrades with the, with the recommended enhancements of the pavilion. Do I have a second?
What's the, is the amount on that one, one sixty-one, two eighty?
Hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty...
No, I'm sorry, that...
Oh, yeah, I see. Hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Hundred and sixty-one, two eighty on that one?
Yeah, hundred and sixty-one, two eighty, we'll beat that one. Yes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed?
No.
Three noes, five yeets. Motion passes.
It's my turn now.
It is your turn, sir.
Motion to approve the Ashley Park upgrades.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve Ashley Park upgrades, all in favor, say aye.
And how much is the total on that one?
It's a hundred, oh, I'm sorry, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, that includes the playground also.
Yeah, that includes the playground and the bathroom. Seven hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Just to be clear for public record, did we already vote on this?
No.
Okay. But just to be clear, this is coming from the former AMP fund?
Correct.
Okay.
This is coming from AMP fund.
All, all four of these items that have to do with parks?
I just wanna be clear on that, in case anybody doesn't know.
Yes, absolutely, all of them.
Did you get a second on that one?
Think I did.
Okay, you did.
Yes, I have a motion, a second. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
We will have additional, uh, something coming up on Bishop Park Pavilion. We'll talk about that eventually.
Yeah. All right, now we have some more engineering, uh, slash legal, probably.
We're keeping you busy, not Ted.
Looks like petition for the formation of Spring Hill Manor Municipal Property Owner Sewer Improvement District of Bryant, Arkansas.
All right, so, Spring Hill Manor Improvement District, this is a subdivision that came through about six months ago. Uh, and what it is, is it's, it's a, right there next to Hurricane Storage, it's a narrow strip of land. I can't remember how many lots they're putting in it, but they're gonna connect to our sewer with a low-pressure force line. And, uh...
Twenty-two.
And we typically discourage that, but in that particular area, it's really, really hard to get gravity sewers. It's gonna be very expensive. The one condition that we allow them is if they form an improvement district. It's maintain their sewer to our specifications. They have met that criteria, they have provided design, it's been accepted by Department of Health. And so, this is the creation of that, that improvement district. Uh, the commissioners will be Robert Moser, Charles Faulkner, and Candy Moser. And it is under an emergency clause because they're wanting to build as soon as possible.
What was the recommendation from, what was the recommendation from planning?
Uh, it would've...
With DRC?
Yeah, it would've been recommended with a improvement district when it went through the planning, fishing, and RC process.
Motion to suspend the rules and approve with first, second, and third reading by title only.
This is a petition, so it's not an ordinance.
Good, deal, all right.
But actually, the...
I need to approve.
But I do believe this is.
I need to actually, is, I have a public hearing, is there anyone here to comment on the improvement district before the council takes a vote? We consider that, it doesn't look like anyone is here, so we can consider that we've had a public hearing on the petition. Um, the, the next step is for the council to consider the ordinance that establishes the district, there are certain statutory requirements. The district has met those statutory requirements, there's nothing legally that would prevent them from having improvement district established if the council needs appropriate. Uh, you all just need to consider whether or not we'll pass that rule, if anyone that disagrees.
Is this property close to city limits?
It is within the city limits.
So it is.
It is within.
It's not showing on the agenda.
It doesn't have a number on it.
It will have one.
There is, there is an ordinance attached to the agenda.
It's in the paper, there's three papers.
There's a, there is an ordinance.
It's attached, yes, ma'am.
There is, there is an ordinance that was in the agenda.
Got the bill of insurance.
Yep, it's attached, for sure. It'll be two thou- two thousand twenty twelve, it's had, and it's got a spot for the improvement district number. That's a little bit of misnomer, we cannot assign the district number to it until it's approved by the council, and county clerk office took that. So if it's approved, we have to press the back of it and insert that.
Butch.
Okay, and you said, uh, this has an emergency clause on it, is that what you said, Ted?
Yeah.
Yes, because, okay, so, uh, we need to suspend the rules and, no?
I don't think we do.
Oh, for second, for second and third reading?
And that's a, you gotta read it, first, second, third.
Oh, yeah.
Second, they need to pass the ordinance.
Is that what, is that what, which just?
He had a motion, and I just seconded it.
Okay, okay, so we've got, we're there.
It's right here, yes.
It wasn't, it wasn't on the agenda?
Yes, it is, that's on the agenda.
It's under, it's under number nine, it is, because the ordinance is under the petition piece, so the ordinance is unattached.
It's right there.
It's attached on the.
Yes.
It's, it's by the ordinance establishing the district.
It's under from the state plan?
No, it's under number nine.
Do we need to suspend the rules and?
They're all attached together.
And clarify it, would that help everybody, or is, are we okay?
She understands where it's at.
Okay, just checking.
So do we have a motion to suspend the rules and read by first, second, and third by title only?
Sure.
And a second for that, that would be Butch and Rob, and this is an ordinance establishing the Spring Hill Manor Municipal Property Owner Sewer Improvement District, number blank of Bryant, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Some move.
Did we vote?
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, did I?
I missed a step there.
I did miss a step.
You missed a step, that's, that's a good effort, though.
Uh, I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was suspending the rules, and now an ordinance establishing the Spring Hill Manor Municipal Property Owner Sewer Improvement District, number blank of Bryant, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes. Now I'm back on track, I apologize for that.
Now, Brendan's motion to adopt.
Now, do I have a motion to adopt?
Or Carlton, somebody down there?
I'll do, yeah, I'll do it.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Carlton and a second by Brenda to adopt. Roll call vote, please.
Carlton?
Yes.
I'm having to win this, oh, and God, Miller?
Yes.
Butch?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
I'm having to write this all out, uh, Star?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Did I get everybody?
I can't everybody, but Lauren isn't not here.
Gotcha, okay, so, passed.
Motion passes, uh, there was an emergency clause?
Motion, do we?
Motion to adopt the emergency clause.
Second, good, Star seconded it.
An ar- motion to approve emergency clause and a second, roll call vote, please.
Um, what's this gonna be, Wade?
Yes.
Butch?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Carlton?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Paul?
Oh, yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
Passed.
Skip me, that's okay.
Well, I pointed at it.
You don't love me anymore, that's fine, yes.
I pointed at it.
Pointing.
And glad I'm not here.
We got you.
Glad I'm not here, this is ordinance twenty twenty dash twelve. Sorry for that compugy, council, I apologize.
I don't remember.
I apologize likewise, that's what I, engineers try to do attorney, uh. We, we usually mess that up.
Uh, I have number ten.
I have number ten, which is a resolution for, uh, to accept a pre-annexation agreement for Sam's Hill. This is an area that's up, uh, by Hilldale, and the, there's a North Haven subdivision, that's right there. And I believe they have signed the pre-annexation agreement when they were here, so this is just right alongside them, they're connecting to our sewer. Uh, so, they will, wide with everything else that's associated with the annexation, so that we can kind of fill in that gap that's left up there. Uh, just wanna add that the, the level of, there's a hundred and twenty-eight lots in this. I think, uh, we're looking around in the nature of two million dollar worth of infrastructure that's gonna be added to the city as a result. It's gonna be good, it could be bad, but, uh.
It'll be good.
And how close are they to the city limits?
You can see the red line, they're, well within the one, one mile planning district.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion to adopt, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution authorizing the city of Bryant Water and Sewer Waste Water Department to provide services outside the city limits of Bryant, Sam's Hill subdivision, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. This is resolution twenty twenty dash fifteen. And now we move on to item number eleven. Which, I thought our code enforcement gentleman was gonna be here for that, but.
Uh, yes, as the pavilion is, is built within the flood lane. It is a floodproof structure, it's, it's armored, made to withstand being within floodwaters, it is not in the floodway, it's in the flood plain. But as a requirement, uh, we try to police ourselves that we don't allow people to build within the flood plain unless they meet certain requirements, and this is one of them. They have to seek a variance, and so we're seeking a variance, uh, from the procedure of, uh, our code. And it basically says, uh, that we must submit a petition, which is directly to, to this body, that says, uh, that, you know, if we're doing this, we seek the variance, we're showing that we got a good sufficient cost, it's a floodproof structure. Uh, granting a variance will not result in any adverse impact upon other lands, it will not. Uh, granting a variance will not result in any additional threats to public safety. This thing is a venue, it's not intended to be occupied during flooding events, so there's no issue with public safety. If granting a variance will not result in extraordinary public expense, it won't. Uh, if granting a variance does not create a nuisance, cost fraud, or victimization of the public, it will not. If granting a variance will not result in increased flood heights or increased, or expected flood velocity, we're actually detracting the amount of volume that this thing is creating. If the requested variance is a minimum necessary conservative flood hazard to afford the necessary relief, no, upon determination that the requested variance is necessary to avoid extraordinary hardship or after. I, I mean, either we build it or we don't, we don't have a venue, so that's our concern hardship.
This is for the pavilion?
Yes.
And no resident involved?
Correct.
It's in the middle of Bishop Park?
That's right.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the variance to the flood plain damage prevention code for Bishop Park Pavilion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, council. A formality we discovered we needed to do after our last meeting.
Sit down, Ted.
Code let us know, and now moving on to the one world of the Bryant Fire Department, presenter chief J P Jordan.
He looks stowed up.
He's been sitting too long.
That's a sea lane.
So I have for you, uh, an ordinance to waive competitive bidding for a compact tractor package. We priced all these out to businesses within the county, and, uh, it's like four hundred dollars over, three, three hundred some dollars over the threshold for bid. It will be purchased from a local vendor in the city of Bryant, so.
We're gonna do it, chief.
We are going to, uh, as y'all know, when we were fortunate enough to get to the fire station, we were able to purchase five acres at each location, so now we have ten acres to take care of, so we wanna be good neighbors and, uh, good representatives of the city of Bryant, keep our, our grass mowed and keep, keep things kept up with, so.
Does that include the acre that, uh, school just recently?
That's, we had four plus acre, that now makes five down there at the train center, and, uh, the leftover material from when we burned the hay, uh, pallets and things like that, we have to take out of those containers, and we take it out there and spread it in field with silicon compost, so this will be something that, that we need for a while.
What actions needed, sir?
Just to waive our competitive bidding because of the, the amount to, uh.
It's an ordinance.
I'm sorry, Ted.
It's all right. Motion to suspend the rules and approve the ordinance first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second. Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read first, second, and third reading by title only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to adopt, sir.
Second.
An ordinance to waive the competitive bidding process for the purchase of a compact tractor implement and utility trailer package for the city of Bryant Fire Department and for other purposes.
Motion to adopt. Motion to adopt, sir.
Have a motion to adopt, do I have a second?
Second.
Second down here, on, on my right, uh, all in favor, oh, roll call, my bad.
Yes.
Dick and Boffel?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Glenn? Atkin? Henson?
Yes.
Rodeo?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hermano?
Yes.
Pass.
Pass. Is this a, uh, do we need to, is there an emergency clause on this?
I don't believe so.
Grass is growing very fast right now, it's kind of dry.
Just wanna make sure.
And this is, uh, these funds are coming out of our current adopted operating budget, if we were able to save through a couple of other items issued.
Cool.
Good.
This is, this is ordinance twenty twenty dash thirteen. Moving on down to the police department now, it's all, uh, first responder night tonight.
Actually, sorry, that, that, uh, that does have an emergency call.
It does?
It does?
Motion to, motion to approve emergency clause?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve emergency clause, roll call vote?
Dylan, please?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Dick and Boffel?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hermano?
Yes.
Rodeo?
Yes.
Pass.
Josh, good.
Emergency clause passes, it's still ordinance twenty twenty dash thirteen.
Looked that thing, I didn't even catch that.
Yeah.
All right, now it's chief's turn.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Yeah.
I've known it since February. That's a good thing.
It was a good thing you were here.
Uh, the one thing we have is the, uh, list of vehicles that are currently on our fleet, this is, next year is the year to roll our fleet, so we're just lining things out to go ahead and get rid of some of the vehicles that we're, getting high mileage and stuff on. So it's just a list of cars that we want to sell, to get you permission to sell those. You'll notice there's two to Shannon Hills, the others are going on GovDeals, which is what we normally do. Uh, Shannon Hills has reached out to us, if they have a need, um, they're down, they're tremendously on police cars, they know that we have them, they asked us, and we, we haven't agreed to a price yet, because we're gonna get permission to sell them first, uh, but you're probably looking anywhere between ten, eleven thousand for both those. Uh, that's something they asked us to do, so.
Motion to approve items thirteen and fourteen.
We have a motion to approve items thirteen and fourteen.
Second.
And a second. Thirteen, just for the record, is approving all this vehicles for sale on GovDeals, and fourteen is to sell two units to Shannon Hills Police Department for fair market value and waive selling them on GovDeals.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are any of these items, uh, Department of Defense?
There are, there are two of them, I, there were noted last, though, in the list. ASO on the, they're, they're used, they're not military.
Oh, that's what that means?
Yes.
Yeah, law enforcement support organization, it's a, an escape and, and a van that we used at one point for a tax illegal that, that's not being used, and the, uh, escape is getting to the point of, there's no more after thirty minutes, is that right?
Thank you.
And also, if, if the deal with Shannon Hills falls through, we'll sell them on GovDeals, to give the, 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 they're not gonna stay in the fleet.
Oh.
We have a motion and a second to approve items thirteen and fourteen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's passed, thirteen and fourteen.
The last part is, at the end of this year, we'll pay off our, our vehicles that we bought in two thousand seventeen. Time to swap those cars, I'm just rolling our fleet ordinance, what we're doing. Uh, this is a deal that Enterprise rental has brought to us, it's a, they're on a government-approved contract, so it's not really a, a sole source, but it is already a government-approved contract to do it. It allows us to go ahead and preorder the vehicles, and if you don't know, police vehicles are very hard to come by right now, especially considering they're getting destroyed all across the country, so they're already short, now they're even shorter. Just allow us to go ahead and place our order, they'll come pre-equipped, uh, there's some people, I've already been asked that, yeah, some people, uh, but they'll come pre-equipped with everything, uh, we have to deal with Enterprise. Also, when we go time to sell them, uh, Enterprise actually sells our vehicle for us, takes that money and rolls it back into our next purchase. And it's just, as we go on, we actually will save money, uh, doing this process. And we're already doing it with our rental vehicles that we're leasing from on a yearly basis, so technically, we're leasing them, but it's a lease-to-own, and we can really actually sell them. We can sell them after year four, they work with us to, to figure out what's the best year to sell it, keeping track of our mileage, and so if it looks like it's time to really be a little, tell us, hey, this will be your best time to sell the car. It's actually beneficial to help us manage our fleet.
Didn't we used to lease vehicles and we went to owning them?
Well, the lease is, lease, on the same way we're, we're financing them, leasing is financed, the same thing, uh, where, however you look at the, the, uh.
Instead of going through a bank, right?
Yeah. Instead of going through a bank, we're going through Enterprise, we have the fund, and they're, when we do it through the bank, we have to wait till the funds are here, and then we, we order, and then we have, it's a number of days to get those paid for, we, you know, say we borrow whatever, say a million dollars. We borrow a million dollars, we're on the hook for that million dollars, and then when we have to pay that out, all the way till we pay off that million dollars. The way Enterprise works is, if we borrow a whole, basically a million dollars from Enterprise, we may only pay three-fourths of that. And we sell the cars, if we sell the cars, say we have three thousand dollars left owed on each car, and we're able to turn around and sell each car for five thousand dollars, we don't pay that last three thousand, they turn around, it's two thousand per, turn it back into the next thing.
So do, do, do we realize any insurance savings from that too, or not?
I, I don't think insurance savings we want, but our, we've looked at what the numbers are in thing, and what we've been paying currently on the last four years, that price is gonna be about the same, maybe a little lower. Yeah, now, it doesn't include any oil maintenance, any of those things.
That's my next question, so thanks, Josh.
But it real, it just sets us in motion to keep our fleet constantly rolling over.
The city will own them, I mean, it, 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 just like we're doing right now, you're financing it basically through them. The biggest difference with them is they have the buying power to buy these cars, set them somewhere, start getting them updated, so in January, we can get them.
Oh, wow.
If we have to finance, we have to wait till January to order, and we're such a six-month timer.
So we're gonna save money, get the cars quicker, and have an updated fleet.
Wow.
You have all six, you get those four trucks, and more.
Yes, to get them fifth, yes.
Motion to suspend the rules, uh, approve the ordinance and read first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read first, second, third reading by title only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? An ordinance to waive the competitive bidding process for the lease of police vehicles from Enterprise for the city of Bryant Police Department and for other purposes. Have a motion to adopt.
Some move, sir.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt, roll call vote, please.
Dylan, please?
Yes.
Dick and Boffel?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Henson?
Yes.
Rodeo? Rodeo?
Yes.
Hermano?
Yes.
Pass.
And there is an emergency clause.
Motion to approve the emergency.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve emergency clause? Roll call vote please.
Uh, wait, yes, okay. Butch?
Yes.
Uh, Henson?
Yes.
Hermano?
Yes.
Haw?
Yes.
Billingsley?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Rodeo?
Yes.
Pass.
And this should be ordinance twenty twenty dash fourteen? Thank you. Finally, moving on to the wonderful world of HR.
Hi, everybody. I have a policy that's actually temporary in that we put it in place when we had a declaration of emergency by the mayor. Um, it was for basically our emergency responders to get additional comp time beyond the twenty-four hours that our standard policy is. Um, and it was to offset the budget impact and also to help the benefit of the fact that they did not, they got exempt from the FFCRA benefits that everybody else got. So, they have learned through COVID that they have not needed that anymore, so we are going to let the policy itself expire when their, uh, state emergency expires.
With the slated from August sixth.
Oh, really?
Is this a, is this a municipal?
Hundred and twenty days from the other.
Is this a municipal state of emergency, or is it a state of federal?
This is a municipal.
Okay.
This is, this is our local.
Okay, thanks.
What we do have is about eight employees across these departments who have gone over the standard policy and so we wanted to put it in front of you all to approve them to keep that time until July first of two thousand twenty-one. Um, so that they have time to use it and not lose it, or we will pay it out at that point in time.
So that was, that was what I was going to ask, so it expired August the sixth, but the time they will get to keep it till July of two thousand twenty-one?
Yes, their ability to earn beyond the standard twenty-four hours will, will expire on August sixth. Uh, but we do have these, this small handful of employees that has extra comp time, um, and so we wanted to give them a chance to use it. And all, and take into consideration the bottleneck that we're going to hit at the end of the year with all these people who have not been able to take vacation time, have additional comp time now. All these things that in our standards and our policies are use it or lose it, um, so we wanted to give them some time to use it. The comp time, if they don't use it, it has to be paid out. Basically, comp time is overtime in the form of time off. So, we have to pay it out, it doesn't, it's not a use it or lose it, they're going to pay it or they'll use it by then.
So what happens after August the sixth?
Yeah, that was my question.
Are you, I mean.
If they extend it.
Well, after August sixth, that would be, uh, either I declare a, I can declare another emergency.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
And continue that on, but, but this resolution right here will dissolve this, this, this part of that.
Right, but, but if we.
So it will take, it will be affecting.
If we have a state of emergency after past August sixth, we can just introduce, or you can create a new policy.
If we need to, yes.
From, yeah, okay.
But, uh, and we talked to department heads and they don't seem to feel that there's going to be a need for that.
Okay.
So that's one of the reasons we went ahead and then decided to go ahead and do this and let this dissolve on August sixth.
It'll go back to our standard policy if they can get up to twenty-four hours of comp time. In these, in these departments, we do have an exception to the fire department, they brought that policy a while ago.
Yeah.
But their policy is the twenty-four hours.
I just want to say a special thank you to all these first responders during this time, that the duties that they have had to do extensively, uh, through the fire department, the police department, uh, for our public works, employees, everybody that's had to step up. They've done a great job, a great job.
They really have.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes, it is twenty twenty dash seventeen.
Thank you.
And now that moves us on, thank you, Charlotte, that moves us.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Since, not you, I'm sorry. I mean, I didn't mean to sound that way. That sounded rude, I apologize. Don't know what you said. I didn't.
Go ahead, ask the question, so.
Try to be nice. Now, with, with regards to the, uh, discussion from Prospect Park earlier tonight, um, I, I don't know if we need a motion or, because I'm aware of a policy with regards to that, but.
I don't think we do in that case, I mean, that was, as, like you say, is administrative decision and we can, we can work through that.
Can I make a suggestion that?
Sure.
That, that we could, that whoever this third-party firm is that's doing these audits, complete everything, and then it be put up for consideration?
Sure.
And so, that would, whatever's happened at Prospect, I'm sorry, that's y'all's ward, but.
Yeah.
Well, and also to piggyback on top of that, if there's any other private streets
Sure.
to be incorporated into the city planning in the future, go by the same policy. So, I mean, it's, it's now, past and future.
And that's, and that's my point, completing the audit, because completing everything
No problem.
and then do it citywide, so it doesn't look like piecemeal or whatever's decided.
With a notice.
And Josh, I understand about private gate and all that stuff, but I think we need to do everything at once, instead of it just being a one-off. That's just my suggestion.
No, and with the notice, when we do that, you know, make sure that we give them ample time to react when we notify them, you know, whether it's ninety days or, or whatever that timeframe is. And I also want to, I appreciate First Electric, I know, talking to them, you know, we did, um, you know, the city had a, a municipal rate and that, and First Electric was passing that on to the Prospect Park, you know, instead of a retail rate, so I appreciate them working.
And that's not something that First Electric, that's a, that's a state mandated tariff rate?
Okay.
For, for street lights that we give to, that First Electric gives to municipals.
Yeah, but they were going to get that same rate, but I, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that and work on that aspect of it. All right, uh, moving on now to mayor comments, uh, first and foremost, uh, this Saturday morning at nine AM is the ever-popular meeting with the mayor. Uh, join virtually on the YouTube channel, correct?
Thank you. Yes.
Uh, special guest will be Dr. Walters, talking about all things school. Should be real fun, I bet I'll get a lot of comments, probably. Uh, also, I want to say Bryant one-on-one is going well, I know I've, I've seen a couple of our, of our people in Bryant one-on-one here tonight, which has been, been nice, it added to the crowd. So we've got some fresh blood in here, and they saw kind of an interesting council meeting tonight, but that's okay. Uh, some things that's never happened in my life, all good.
Mine either.
Uh, August fifth, uh, the police department is having a promotion ceremony at Love Auditorium at ten AM in the morning. I'm sure they would be happy to have council there, if council's available. Uh, we've got a lieutenant, two sergeants, and two corporals, I believe. In addition to a retirement ceremony and a dispatcher of the year ceremony, correct?
Yes, sir.
Awesome.
What time did you say?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
Email the chief around, we're, we're just kind of trying to make a list of, we don't know how many people to keep our social distancing.
And we'll be in the new Love Auditorium, if you've not been in there, it's a real pretty place. Uh, just wanted to give you all an update, uh, Butch asked me about it already, and I'd already planned to put it on there, but thank you for reminding me, Butch. The, we got the committee established for the Byrne people, I asked several people in one-on-one, I've got seven of the eight slots filled, and I said, that's good enough. Uh, so we've reached out to them and we're working on setting up a first date for that meeting for the Byrne committee now. And we'll work on that, we're also working on setting up and scheduling for me the city attorney interviews, so I can bring the prospective attorney or attorneys to you next month, probably, honestly, in a special council meeting. We'll probably call one for that, because that might take a little bit of time for some of that, so I don't think, I think it'd be better if we did that in a special council meeting.
Can you tell us how many applicants you?
Uh, we've got four applicants. Couple of them say they live in the city and several don't.
Okay.
That's the easy way to.
Yeah, it's a way to thin it down, if you, especially if you've got some living in the city, which is always nice. Uh, also, I want to remind everybody on council, because you'll probably be getting calls about this next month, and everybody that's in the public right now. Uh, school's starting next month. Uh, in fact, I think it's August twenty-fourth is now the new school date, so, a- all I can say is two words, patience and understanding.